Work session to order, this is Monday, July 11, 2016, 4:30 PM, Thomas J. Smith Council Chambers. We're going to mix things up just a little bit tonight. I want to start first off with one of our discussion items, it's the Seattle City Properties. Bill, would you come and help us out today?
Thank you. There's a group of us that have been meeting for a while called SURGE, which stands for Sustainable Urban Revitalization and General Empowerment. And this planning group has been meeting for the last several months to identify ways to improve in a sustainable way Burlington's neighborhoods. And we focused initially on the South Hill, and still are. The philosophy guiding the group's efforts is holistic, and the idea is that we would factor in spiritual, economic, health, education, housing, public safety, relationship needs, and do that in a plan of action that can improve and empower lives and rejuvenate our most critical neighborhoods. Those are lofty goals, and we meant them that way, and we don't view them as easy. In fact, as we've done this over a snail's pace, it feels like, reminded of, if you know Eugene Peterson, he has a book called "Perseverance is Long Obedience in the Same Direction," quoting Friedrich Nietzsche. "The essential thing in heaven and earth is that there should be a long obedience in the same direction." So we're pursuing, we're determined to move forward that way. And rather than utilizing a shotgun approach, we're looking at really focused areas within our city. And though we had the South Hill Association that's very active in trying to promote and develop their neighborhood, so we were working with Vince Copeland in that effort, and want to continue that. We look for ways to address these social or soft issues, and they're very difficult to figure out ways to help folks from one stage of life to a better stage of life. A group that's been formed, Bridges Out of Poverty, is addressing really what is a significant part of what we wanted to address as well. It provides training to those low-income individuals that have a poverty frame of reference, and provides them connections to others that can walk beside them as they seek to improve their lives. They have a part of it called the Getting Ahead piece, which is a 16-week training program. Their first class of that is getting ready to graduate in August. There's a second stage, the Staying Ahead piece, that calls them to connect, graduates to connect, with two or three that could be those that would walk beside them, and they're those who are already living sustainable lives. So, that brings us to some of the things we'd like to see is, in this bit about having both a neighborhood revitalized and people's lives changed and improved, we know that housing is a key part of that. A couple of years ago, there were some big discussions here about tax abatements, and one of the things I remember this council bringing up, and the mayor specifically talking about, don't, just don't forget that we're actually talking about urban revitalization, we're trying to improve people's lives. Somewhat an inspiration for the SURGE group, for moving forward in the way that we're doing. We want to partner with everyone who's moving in that same direction, that wants to accomplish the same things. One of the partners that we have is Housing Inc., part of Great River Housing and the Southeast Iowa Regional Planning Commission. This entity is a potential owner of real estate and developer of real estate. Where possible, we want to include a prospective homeowner that would, if we're looking at a particular property, and that's an opportunity for us to come in and take a property that's been abandoned, that's in really rough shape, do some significant improvement, and have the person that potentially would own that home participate in that as much as possible. We want to create that sense of ownership, that they have significant skin in the game. We anticipate there are other potential owner, developer, refurbishers that would participate in this kind of program, because we need those lead entities that would own and actually take charge of developing. Besides Housing Inc., Harmony Bible Church has expressed interest. We think there's other nonprofits, Christian Action Committee is interested in with their down payment program, and potentially trying to expand in some way in that effort. So, we want to draw those with the same goals that we have to these efforts. As far as our approach would go, we are looking for single-family homes that would have sufficient bedrooms, reasonable cost to maintain, along with a manageable cost to refurbish. As an example, there are a number of us that walked through two of the city's existing properties that were either abandoned or had to do tax issues. And Housing Inc., Mike, and whoever that was involved in that, did some estimates for the cost to refurbish those two particular properties. It was between $60,000 and $65,000. If the entry costs are not too high, then that kind of refurbishing cost still results in a house that could be affordable to someone that's in the low to moderate income category. Our goal is to have that as reasonably strong an entry point as possible. It matches up with what they can afford, matches up with what is a good quality of living, and they start out with a sense of ownership. So what we're asking is that the city council designate some of the properties that it comes to own through tax delinquencies or nuisance abatement for auction as owner-occupied-only properties, especially in neighborhoods such as South Hill. We feel like owner-occupied, that will perhaps open the door more to those who are going to live it rather than simply landlords that are trying to acquire additional properties. We ask that designation and that discretion be given to the city administration for determining which of these properties would be so designated. The challenge for us is, is there's not a one-size-fits-all. Some of these houses are too big to fit into this program, some are too small, the two-bedroom type homes we struggled with. But I think city administration would certainly know, as we're talking back and forth about a particular property, that this could work for a family, and that this potentially is one that we ought to designate as, we'll go to auction, and it'll go to the highest bidder, but it'll be owner-occupied. Thank you.
We walked through, actually, four different homes a few weeks ago as a group, and kind of looked at the pros and cons on how they fit within some of the concepts that they're looking to try to achieve. Out of the four that we walked through, I think there were two of them that stood out as being viable for, that they saw as being ones that could easily be, do what they're trying to accomplish. The only thing that they're really asking of us to do differently than what we typically do, we do typically, we put restrictions on most of the properties, most of it's just essentially to bring it up to code. They're asking us to consider the, having a couple of them, the ones that they look at as being potentially viable to do this with, having an additional restriction, just saying that we would like to see those be owner-occupied for the first three years.
Yeah, two to three years, roughly in there.
Just with the idea of trying to get them into the hands of an owner-occupied as opposed to a rental. Some of the goals that you're looking to achieve are, the idea with homeownership, that you have, it changes the dynamics of the home relationship for the people that live in that home and how they treat, what their attitude is towards the property. It's just different when you own than when you rent. Yeah, and that pride of ownership is something that we're trying to see occur. Also, to create a structure that allows, instead of, if someone who's in that position where they can, if the opportunities, right, can afford to get into a property, and this is for what they're looking to try to accomplish, I think that you're looking at probably some, trying to get some favorable financing, come up with some ways to help with that down payment assistance, help people to get into a situation where they're able to build some equity into a property as opposed to renting. Just long-term stability for a neighborhood. So, we have a couple of properties, again, that we've seen that, out of the ones that we've acquired through the 657A, I don't know if all of them are through 657A.
The two that we've looked at, the four that you looked at, all were, yeah.
That we'll be bringing forward, we'd like to put a couple, that designation on it, that it has to be for owner-occupied for the first two to three years. Still allows that anyone can bid on it, but the goal is just trying to build some long-term stability into a neighborhood. It may mean that we get a little bit less money out of the properties, because you have, you've changed the dynamics of who's going to bid on it and for why, but we, from a staff perspective, we feel that's all, it's a good thing for the community as a whole. Does it make sense?
Makes sense to me. I, I think it's fantastic, personally, I, I think it's fantastic. Who's, who all out there is involved in this? That's for me, I just say, again, I'm just one person, but I'm really excited to hear, to hear about that. And it's just, it's just a reminder to me that people still care about their fellow men, about their community, and I have no issue with it whatsoever.
No, and I think, I think programs and things like that, what we're talking about, is extremely important. You know, there's a lot of really good people out there that just, they just can't get a property in their own, you know, in their hands. So, opportunities like this, it's really great to see something happening like that in our community.
We're trying to make it a way where they can stay there, that's the thing. So it's financial literacy.
Can you come to the, can you come to the, just so you're making.
I said, we're trying to make this in a way that it's sustainable, that they can stay in it. So it includes some training that teaches them about financial literacy, how to maintain a home. So the whole goal is, is not just an in-and-out, but they can stay and grow, stay with the property.
Is this kind of modeled after Habitat for Humanity?
Well, the parts that are, parts that are, for, the whole thing of trying to get them to join in with the effort is a part of having more skin in the game and pride of ownership, plus learning how to maintain a property once they're there, yeah.
The Christian Action used to have a deal kind of similar.
And they're very interested in joining with us on some of this. They had a great follow-up program for up to 10 years. Marshall Walls would connect up with folks that were in the program, and that accountability, I think, is also an important piece, this continuing follow-up. Bridges believes in the same kind of follow-up, in that staying-ahead connection, so that's how we see those things coming together.
I want to commend you guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Very nice.
Counsel, are we good?
Oh, yes.
Wonderful.
Check with legal and make sure it's, we're good.
That's kind of what we've, we've been doing through this process, is trying to, we've had discussions on this for, what, close to a year now, I think? Trying to see what can we, what's the right approach to do this, and we'll still go through the auction process as we do this, but I think we've got an avenue that if we can get it done at the right price, it'll, it'll work well. And even if someone, I mean, I mean, their goal is, they have a plan for how the, how it could be purchased and done with a renovation, but if someone else comes in and buys it, that's good for the neighborhood, because really, the whole idea is around anyone coming in and being able to buy it from a homeownership perspective and build the neighborhoods up. So, yeah, those will come forward over the next couple of months, I don't know what is timing, what your timing is there, but.
Excellent, thank you guys, very much. Before we move forward, I got to read this, this was, I've got to find out who these employees are. This was in the Hawkeye. Diane Sweden sent this, and it says, "Great employees. The good weather in May ca-" that's how long I've had this. The good we- I rejected him. "The good weather in May gave me a chance to power wash and water, seal our porches. On the front porch, we have swings my husband made, one needed refinished. That done, I was having a hard time getting it back on the porch. City employees could see I was having trouble, they stopped, got it on the porch, and hung it for me. The city should be proud of its employees, thank you guys. Whoever knows who these city employees are, I want to find out who these employees are that helped this lady get her swing back on the porch. I want to recognize you, so if somebody knows who these, these employees are, please get that information back to me as soon as possible." And I just, I think there's more stories like that of city employees that do things like this, but that go unrecognized. And I, I've been carrying you guys in my pocket since May, so I want to find out who that is so I can recognize you. I had to get that out so I didn't forget it another week. Next, we're going to do number nine. A resolution accepting design for Phase Five of the Riverfront Flood Mitigation Project, and then we'll start from the top and work our way down. Thanks, Charlie.
Charlie Nichols, City Planner, was told last time you asked me to come back after we could get some more public comment on this, which I'm pretty sure you'll have, we put a video on social media showing the proposed plan, we've had a lot of feedback on it. Good opinions, bad opinions, but a lot of feedback.
Where'd you put that at?
Our Burlington Community Development Department Facebook page, and then it's been shared on a number of pages as well. Steamboat Day shared it, which they have a pretty big following, so there've been a lot of people who have seen it. Definitely our most viewed post ever by far. I do have some cost and maintenance information, if you would want me to go over that now in this work session as opposed to the next council meeting.
Please.
So, for the splash pad, there's a lot of questions about maintenance and upfront costs. Our consultants have installed a number of these, and they've given us comparable estimates. The splash plate installation would cost between $150,000 and $200,000, and that would be part of the overall figure. The maintenance ranges between $10,000 and $15,000 per year, with about $3,000 to $4,000 being labor and maintenance costs, and the rest being water, sewer fees, and electricity. For comparison, our current fountain we have down there ranges between $10,500 and $13,700 per year, just in labor without accounting for water and electricity costs. So, the splash pay, the splash pad could be significantly cheaper than the current fountain. We have a pretty technical fountain that, right now, from what I've been told, that requires a lot of man-hours to operate it during the summer and spring year, seasons. The large dock, which has been shown, will be part of a boating infrastructure grant, which we would want to apply for in October if we got the go-ahead from you. Smith Group, JJ Hour, has built a few others, one in Bettendorf at the casino, and then there's another dock in Clinton. The maintenance costs would be very small for the first 15 years, but then after 15 years, there would be some cost for rehabilitation. So you wouldn't expect very much over the first 15 years, then you'd have to rehab.
What was that for?
The floating boat dock. And then the installation of removable panels. They estimate that the entire removable portion of the wall would take about 40 hours of work for a team of eight people to install. And most floods will not require a full installation. And I'm not sure if you are aware of this or not, do we have the overhead working? Can we put this up there? So the, the large overall plan shows losing parking in the entire center of that area, as well as changing a lot of other things, which would be a huge change, but as of right now, we just have money for the 2.1 acres in the yellow. So we're not going to be able to do the entire thing at once. The number of parking spaces lost in this phase would be 24, which is about 15% of the total area. So it's not going to be a large drastic change to start off with. We'll do what we can afford, and then as grant funding becomes available, we'll do more projects. This gives us the advantage of having some time to warm up to the project. I know that there are a lot of people who are worried about what would happen to the memorial auditorium or the port building if all the parking is taken out. By doing it in smaller steps like this, we get the chance to do things incrementally and see if we like the direction we're moving in. Do you have any questions on this project for me?
I want to thank you, Charlie, because when we left last time, there was a lot of confusion about what we were supposedly going to approve. But if, if what we're approving is just in yellow, I'm comfortable with that. I am not comfortable with saying we're going to approve the whole plan, because I don't like the whole plan. I think Splash Pad is a, have no, no-go for me. And that supposed skating rink is also a no-go for me. So, just counsel, if, when that, wondering if that comes up, you're not going to get my support on it. But if what we're asking is, say, we're approving what's there in the yellow, great, and I appreciate the clarification on that.
And we do need some direction on that at the next council meeting, they need to start their designs for the flood wall. And what we plan to do directly adjacent to the flood wall will have a significant impact on what they put in their designs. Just that area adjacent to the riverfront, though, not the entire.
And I have heard from a number of people about the loss of parking there, and if we're just talking about 20, what'd you say?
24 spaces.
24.
That's doable at this point.
In fact, I think whenever we talk about parking, I always think then of the lot to the south of the auditorium that is grossly underutilized. And I think when we look at parking in the whole area, losing 24 spots, if we do better utilization on the other lot, it'll be a zero loss, actually. Am I hitting that right, or am I missing something?
You're right that the lots to the north and the south of that main lot are underutilized. Our parking studies show that they had a maximum 20% usage during the work week. Of course, that's not during big events when they're all full, but that gives you an idea that there is room for parking to shift. One other thing I should probably mention, the fountain that's there now is shown as being removed. We're looking into if we can keep it, there's about 10 feet of space between the edge of that fountain and where the flood wall will have to be, so it's not yet clear if the flood walls can be constructed while keeping that fountain.
Do we have a, for instance, when there's civic music going, can they restrict who parks? Do we have a policy about that, or do they, is there some way we can make that, the 70-some parking spaces left for people that really need the close parking space? That's just something that just came out of the top of my head, I don't know if that.
I don't know how you're going to get that accomplished.
I don't know, I don't either, I'm just asking the question.
Just for a special event?
Yeah.
Probably.
There are people that want to come to a council meeting and want to talk about this. They want to express themselves. I want them to know exactly what's involved in Phase Five of this improvement. Everything that's, that's a part of that improvement, and what it's going to do for the riverfront and what it's going to do to the riverfront. I want them to know.
Sure.
And right now, I don't really know. I'm confused from what we were shown last, or two weeks ago, and what you're showing tonight. I really don't, with that, I don't know what's involved, what, how much money's going to be spent on it, where the money's coming from. And all, all those kind of questions need to be answered before we vote on this.
I think that's one of the downfalls of doing the big overall plan upfront, you don't really see the piece-by-piece. And I've asked our consultants to develop graphics showing what just Phase Five would look like in isolation without everything else around it, that I think would give a much clearer idea of what would actually be done.
Good.
You'll have that for?
For the, the 18th.
But that, that phase is 5.6 million, somewhere in that? And that is strictly the, well, you have a little bit more than just the flood wall area.
Yeah, the, it's the area from the overpass down to pass the auditorium, and then the amount of flood wall built past the auditorium depends on where bids come in, and then will pick up in the next phase, continuing that wall up Market Street.
The other components, one of the things that would have a major impact on this project would be the splash pad. If you were to do that, because that's part of the infrastructure, you're saying that, I think that, as they do the design for the, this, the main project, they're going to need to know if we're going to look at doing the splash pad, because they're going to incorporate some of the infrastructure to make that possible, is that correct, or?
Yeah, they, they don't have to do it, but if at this time you said you were okay with the features, they would try and, when they're doing construction, incorporate infrastructure connections for, for future features. So it would cut down on the cost if those were done in the future.
In the future.
And this we need to, this we need to decide on Monday?
Well, you're not, you're not committing to doing those other things, but they're going to, if you're saying that you're at least willing to consider them in the future, they want to make sure that they address it now, have it set up that what they do bid out allows that to go in without causing a lot of significant rework of things later. Now, that, that being said, if the council as a whole says, "There's no way we want to see a splash pad here," or the skating rink, there's no reason for them to design for it. So that is worthy of your discussion. If that's from a council as a whole, if you don't want to see those types of features looked at in the future, they might as well drop them from the discussion.
I haven't, I just want to say this, I haven't received any support for those items. Every, everybody that I've talked to that have reached out to me has said that they would rather not have those, have those additional things built into the plan, so I'm just, I'm just throwing that out there. That's, that's what I'm leaning towards, because I haven't had, I haven't had one person say to me yet that they, that they would like to see that.
I've actually seen quite a bit of positive things said about at least the splash pad, just, that's what I've seen.
Yeah, I've heard some positive comments, and some negative ones. I'm not ruling it out of my mind yet, I don't know.
Tell me again, what was the maintenance cost on the splash pad?
Maintenance cost on the splash pad would be between $10,000 and $15,000 per year, with the 3, $3,000 to $4,000 of that being labor and maintenance, and the rest being utilities.
Which is about the same as with the current, except not even.
It's less than the current fountain.
Right, because that, ours isn't factored.
The labor and maintenance is about, is over twice as much for our current fountain.
Well, I, I'm concerned from a different angle, as, one is, there was a splash pad put in two years ago at, at the Stone Gardens, and it hasn't worked since the first year. We have had, as a community, a pretty poor performance record on our fountains, on the riverfront, and our fountains in the parks. I think the fountains down on the riverfront have been off more than they've been on. And, and I'm talking seasonally, I know it's seasonally, but even in season, they've been off more than they've been on. And the, the private water park that's here in town, that, they were given assurances that that was first-rate, top-notch, best product on the market, and they've had nothing but troubles with it because it was improperly designed for this climate. And I, I just want to make sure that, that if it, that we're 100% certain that whatever company puts it in knows what they're doing. And two, I said before, I really don't want to see us putting in projects that we're going to have annual cost involved on. If that, if those numbers, I mean, $15,000, the big picture isn't a lot, but a lot of $15,000 cost add up pretty quick. Personally opposed to it, if the public says they want it, I'm, I'm voting for, in favor of it, but I'm not going to know until the public has had an opportunity to, to address it, and then look at everything that's, that's come out so far.
Again, the decision that's being made, or being asked to be made now, is not whether you're going to, whether you're going to do that.
It's Phase Two.
As time goes on, I think, if you're saying that you're at least willing to consider it, you may see an application that the staff works on in the future?
Yes, none of these amenities right now are planned in the budget, these would all be grant applications. So, in the future, if we did want to do a splash pad grant application, it would have to come before the council to get approval for that grant application. So, as we do these projects over time, you'll then have a chance to make a decision on individual features, whether or not you would like them.
And I guess our biggest thing is, we want to make sure that if, if there are some of these things that are just, it doesn't make sense to do, we don't want to do, we, we don't want to waste time on it. If you're willing to look at it, they'll, they'll, they'll move forward with those as things that they bring to you in the future, when, if and when they have a grant source that they can go after to try to do the project. I don't know what the likelihood is that you're going to be able to get grant funds to do this, but I think the boating infrastructure might be a little bit more feasible from what little I've heard.
Yes, the, the things adjacent to the riverfront, including the boating infrastructure, are much more likely that we would get funding for that. The shade structures are, I think, the next thing that we will be most likely to get funding for. And then the splash pad, there was a grant, but it's being reworked right now, so we'll have to see what the new criteria is when that comes out.
But for Monday night, you anticipate having a schematic or a picture or something to show us exactly what's in that yellow, what's going, what that yellow area's going to look like?
I've asked our consultants to work on one, so I think they'll have one by then.
And we have, just apparently, since I wasn't here last week when the department head meeting was, but the, it sounds like that even from a staff level, the boating boat ramp, there are some concerns about that too, long-term. And I think those would need to be, I mean, they're, they're not just, not just the council, not just the public, but staff too has concerns on different things, on making sure that we do things that are viable. but staff too has concerns on different things, on making sure that we do things that are viable and we can move forward with.
The ramp or the dock?
The dock itself. I think out on the, out on the riverfront, they're just concerned about the, the maintenance on that, uh, current, uh, some different, just different aspects of it. And I think that before that, they'd want to see something done that put that permanent dock, large dock out there that they had addressed and were satisfied with. So just because it's on here, something from the architects as, as something, I, I don't know if you'll see all of it actually come to you to, to be requested in the future. And most of this stuff, this isn't the, the stuff that means anything to me. I, I'm not too much on worrying about the amenities. I do want the community to, you know, the things to look nice and the people to be happy with stuff. I'm more concerned about just the getting, making sure we move forward with the flood wall.
Those are my next comment in relationship to that. When, when are, when is the, the, uh, lift stations, uh, the pump, pump stations and that sort of stuff going to be considered? I mean, we put the flood wall up and we get flooding on that side, how do we get rid of them? On the west side, how do we get rid of that water?
The same way that we do now. When we put the HESCOs up, we still, we'll have to still pump over until, is that Phase Two or Phase, the third phase?
Yeah, the next phase will be the pumping station, um, down for that section of the wall. And then this phase will be floodproofing of the Market Street lift station.
So it'd be two years after where we put the pumps in, um, and that, I mean, until then, we're doing it the same way we do now. Where we have the several pumps set up that we pump the water over by, with, with those mobile pumps. So, yeah, it's not the ideal, but we're, we're not at ideal now. And it just, it's not, until we get through all, all the phases and that, it won't, it won't be a full, permanent solution. And people do need to recognize that it's, that we're doing it, and we have to do it in phases just by the nature of the way the funding's coming in.
I, I understand that the, the site where they showed the pump is showing the site that's going to have improvements put, put in in Phase Five. Why, uh, that needs to be part of our consideration too. I would think about putting it underground or whatever, uh, other infrastructure needs to be put in.
They're, they're, they're doing the infra, infrastructure they need to underground to, that needs to be done in order to accommodate those future lift, lift stations. That's, that's, they're, they're doing things, they're trying to make sure that they do it in a way that they, that they don't have to redo effort. I don't know if that quite answers it, but...
I hope we're also looking at what other cities have already done along this line though. I mean, if you think we could learn a lot of what we should do and shouldn't do, I hope we're talking to the right people. I mean, I've seen some of it in Debona, Porton, Dubuque, and Clinton and so forth.
Yeah. A lot of the inspiration for this
Is coming from that.
is coming from other cities. Basically, when we had the public meetings, the consultants would show pictures of other cities along the riverfronts to people to generate ideas and to get them thinking. And a lot of these features came from that process.
You guys satisfied?
Sure.
You still, Tim, want to see a good breakdown of what's gonna actually be done? So...
We'll work on it.
All right.
Seven days.
Yep.
Thank you. Thank you, Charlie. Keep up the good work, Mary.
Amen to that. Good job. All right, let's, uh, try to roll downhill a little bit. Uh, we got a proclamation of retirement, Debbie Wagenbach. Fantastic. We've got a couple mayor's awards. And next, we have a public hearing, consideration of a sale of property locally known as nine twenty-five Wells Court, City of Burlington, Iowa. Mr. Tisland?
I'm gonna show a picture here. This is a ban, or a vacant, uh, property. It was a house we acquired through the six fifty-seven A process. It was in a, a very dilapidated state and was demolished. Uh, we've had interest from a neighbor to the west that owns both homes there of purchasing the property and has made a, uh, offer to purchase the property. Haven't heard from, and we did send notice to everyone else within the neighborhood, uh, within two hundred feet. And haven't heard from anyone else, so currently we just have the one bid from the neighbor to the west, uh, to purchase property, expand their yard area.
It is, it is demoed, you said?
It is. Yep, the city did demo it.
Any questions?
No.
Okay. All right, uh, next is a public hearing, consideration of a sale of property locally known as ten fourteen Court Street, City of Burlington, Iowa.
This is another vacant property. A home was demoed on it a number of years ago. Um, we've been maintaining it, um, for the last couple of years. Uh, the property owner, again, to the west, has expressed interest in it and has made a, a minimum offer to purchase the property. Again, did send notice to everyone within the neighborhood. It's, has a very steep terrain, uh, from Court Street up to the north, uh, kind of a hillside there, so it is difficult, um, for use. Uh, would probably be best used by the neighbor to the west, uh, who has submitted the offer to expand their, uh, yard area as well.
You guys have any problems with that?
Okay.
What's, what was the size of, uh, what was this, what was the size of the one on Court Street?
I believe it's, uh, forty by one twenty. I have, I don't have it exactly in front of me, but I believe forty by one twenty approximately.
Either one of these lots is buildable or?
They, they would be buildable. They'd be very difficult lots. The other one is, uh, smaller and this one, just with the terrain, that'd be very difficult to gain access to.
You guys have any problems? Okay. All right, next we have a public hearing, consideration of an ordinance vacating and selling a portion of Gordon Street right-of-way located west of Bomberger Street and a portion of Bomberger Street right-of-way located south of Monroe Street. First reading on this. Mr. Tisland?
These two right-aways were requested be vacated, um, by, uh, check here, the owner at twenty, two thousand five Cliff Road, Jerry and Rebecca Sherwood. They're currently wooded areas. Uh, the Gordon Street right-of-way is essentially their driveway, a private drive with, uh, no other access to other properties. And, uh, the Bomberger right-of-way, uh, is just a, I guess, tree-lined, uh, hillside. Uh, they do own all the property adjacent to it on the west side. They own the, the three lots adjacent to it as well as, uh, these lots and the lots to the north of, uh, Bomberger Street as well. Again, we did send notice to all the neighbors. Um, this did go to the planning commission on June twenty-first, and they voted four to zero to approve vacating the described right-of-way. Gordon Street is a dead-end roadway that only serves a applicant's property at two thousand five Cliff. And Bomberger is a unused and unmaintained right-of-way with lack of ability for future travelway access through the right-of-way. And the applicant has, uh, expressed a desire for ownership and maintenance of the right-ways that are of no use to the city, so...
You guys have any problems with that one?
No.
No.
Okay. Uh, the next one is a public hearing, consideration of an ordinance rezoning the property located at twenty-six thirty-five Mount Pleasant Street from C-two general commercial to R-four multifamily residential zoning district. First reading on that one, Mr. Tisland?
This property is zoned, um, here with the hash marks, is zoned C-two. It's Orchard Gardens, Orchard Meadows is to the east of it. This property is zoned C-two general commercial. For some reason, looking back in our files, it, um, it was previously approved, uh, in two thousand one to construct fifteen condo units on the lot by the city council. And the property was zoned general commercial expanded zoning classification, um, which through the various zoning code changes and updates is no longer a zoning district. Um, so, no, someone else has purchased the property and is desiring to build the, if you can see, kind of the three, um, box, groups of boxes, three more, uh, threeplex apartment buildings on this site. So our zoning code would require, would require residential zoning in order to do that. Um, so that's what they're seeking. Again, it is, uh, R-four to the east and to the south with, uh, Lower Housing to the south and Orchard Meadows to the east. And then general commercial to the west and to the north, uh, with the Burlington B Stadium just in the northwest corner of your picture there, so... This did go to the planning commission again on June twenty-first. They voted four to zero to recommend approval of the rezoning based on the existing use of the property as residential, um, previous approval by the city, uh, under a, uh, no long, now a no longer zoning designation, request the applicant and following the future land use map designation as residential.
You guys have any issues with that?
Yes. On, um, the council, a few months back, maybe eight or nine months back, we had a, a property that, uh, fronted on, um, Mount Pleasant Street that, uh, a developer wanted us to do the same thing. Convert it from C, C-two to, uh, to an R-four. And, uh, I think we decided as a council it was better suited for, uh, commercial use, um, with commercial on both sides of it. I'm not opposed to the, uh, to development on the back two-thirds of the property, but I think the, the front third ought to, uh, remain, uh, commercial, keeping with, consistent with the, uh, with that neighborhood. I know there's some, some R-two in there, but if you drive down, if you drive through there, you'll see it's, it's out of place. And, uh, it just seems to be better suited for, for commercial development. And, uh, it looks like the developer has no plans for, uh, putting, uh, housing, uh, up on the street. I think it would probably be difficult, ooh, I'm going blind. Oh, uh, be difficult to, uh, probably, uh, to, uh, sell housing projects in that area. I would, uh, hope that we could encourage the developer before we approve this to, uh, to divide that off and make that front portion, uh, remain C-two and just rezone the back. Two-thirds or three-quarters, whatever that is, that's necessary for the housing.
I wouldn't want to do that unless the guy developing would be in favor of that, because I'd sure hate to screw up his project for an unknown. I mean, and maybe he wouldn't mind that at all, then, fine.
I, I agree with you on that, Tim. I, I think, uh, I think that would, uh, I remember the other deal. I can't remember, I think it was across the street. That wasn't on the other side of the street.
No.
Was on the same side.
Can you report to where that other property was?
This lot right here.
That's where the four birds.
Right, yeah.
Yeah.
I'm with you, Bob.
They wouldn't have put it, I think.
I don't want to mess it up.
That's the thing, don't mess it up.
I understand where you're coming from, though.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna finish this meeting from my house. Gentlemen, ladies, appreciate it. I'll be watching. Uh, I agree with you on that, Tim. I, I, one hundred percent.
We can contact him and at least inquire what his thoughts are on that. We'll contact the applicant and see what his thoughts are on it at least.
Okay.
Anything else on this one? Satisfied? Public hearing, consideration plans and specs for twenty sixteen former Dresser Rand site cleanup project.
This is the Dresser Rand site there, uh, at the bottom of, uh, it, or intersections of Central and Washington and Agency Street. Been working with Impact Seven G on the, um, assessment of the site. Uh, we did apply for a brownfield cleanup grant for the site and were unsuccessful. Though we did get a assessment grant for the community. Um, the cleanup grant was not successful, so, um, we had this discussion previously about, uh, applying for that before moving forward. Uh, they put together a, a bid packet, a project manual for the cleanup of the site, uh, so this is approval of that. Couple of notes on it. It is a ninety-day, um, cleanup project. Uh, get the dates here. They're looking to have a pre-bid meeting, um, on July twenty-sixth with sealed bids accepted on August fourth, pending approval of these plans and specifications. And then the ninety-day cleanup period. Uh, we did add this to the TIF, as part of the TIF projects. When that was amended, the urban renewal plan, so, um, was, anything you want to add or?
Yeah, we're, with the cleanup there, that'll, I think, that's the, they'll take out the concrete. It'll get pulverized and removed. Uh, the piles of bricks that are in there will be removed with, as part of this project, and it'll get put back to grass on both the east and west side of the tracks or northeast and southwest side of the tracks, or however you call it. Part of the costs and concern will, that there will be some remediation, but for the most part, they'll be doing a, a cap on that in a manner that is satisfactory for DNR purposes.
Excavating the soil and then
They'll excavate a portion of soil, but, but the, any, the contaminants that are below whatever level that is, and I'm not exactly sure what that is in the specs. But it's to, it's, they've done this in coordination with setting up these specs to, to meet standards for, uh, DNR, what DNR would have and allow for potentially redevelopment in the future for commercial, I think.
Commercial or industrial use, yeah. No residential.
No residential. We'd have to do a much more extensive cleanup to make it suitable for that.
Is there a capped well there?
There, yeah, there is a well we capped a, a few years ago as well, which will just remain capped.
But it is commercially available.
It would be available for commercial use in the future. Um, we, one, we talked about whether to put that, leave that with a cement cap on it or go to grass. And I, my preference was just to go to grass, so it'd be a natural, uh, more of a it, a nicer setting. Uh, if somebody does come in and want to develop it in the future, it's gonna need new, they, they would need to have different concrete than what was there currently anyway. It's just not, it's way too uneven to be able to be used the, the way it's set up.
They, they have to remove a lot of it just to get to the
Yep.
soil as well, so...
And we can get rid of the weed problem too, right?
There's a couple buildings and still smaller structures that'll go away as well.
Okay, that's good.
Yeah, in the southwest corner.
Yeah, yep.
And I think that a future project that will be going on in this area too, cascade, the, Central Street overpass, there, there's some, some the wing wall that, that is there, needs some repair work done to it. Maybe more than one wing wall too. I'm not really sure, but but we're, that will be a, a separate project that'll be done here over the, I don't know how, as time allows from engineering to get bids, bid specs together. But again, as Eric mentioned, this would be paid for. Ideally, what we'd be looking at is we get bids in and get the work accomplished. We'll incur the expense and then we'll certify that as a TIF debt. And that's been built in to make sure that we can afford to do that with, as we've looked at, uh, the projects that are going on using TIF funding. It fits within our repayment structure.
And if the bids are too much, we can always say no, right?
We certainly can.
We know how to do that.
Uh, I think the estimate, I don't know if you have a preliminary estimate on that. When we'd done this a couple of years ago, we were looking in the two hundred and sixty thousand range.
Yeah, I think so.
I don't know if, from other things that we've seen, we, we've seen some other preliminary estimates that they've put together that we thought were pretty high. And I guess we'd be hopeful that that would be the same here, but we'll see when, when we get costs in.
Okay.
There will be a representative from Impact Seven G here on Monday to answer any other questions as well.
Good. Questions? Okay. Thank you, guys. All right, here we go. Resolution approving a twenty-eight-year amended agreement between the City of Burlington, Iowa and the Southeast River Regional Airport Authority for shared services and continued operation of maintenance of airport facility. We talked briefly about this two weeks ago. Who's presenting this?
I think the, the one change was the, or the question was the aeronautical need. I think, I guess, do you guys have any further question or?
Let me ask you this. Basically, the agreement is the same as what we've had, except for the armory. Is that correct, Mary?
There are some other wording changes, but they're just wording changes. Uh, that There are some other wording changes, but they're just wording changes, that is the change that was done in here, and it, and that came out of the discussion that was held a year and a half ago, from, between council and the airport commission, on how to handle this long-term. We tried, with the renewal of this coming up this July 1, we thought we'd incorporate, by the time we got to anything that was workable, that had been through the different entities, we decided to incorporate the, any potential transfer of land over into this. Since I wasn't here two weeks ago, I don't know what you have for concerns, but it does, this does lay out the transfer of ownership and then us being able to lease back the property and use it, subject to their permission if we go to do any different things than what we are currently doing onsite, and it also lays out how costs would be done on the demolition of the building in the future, and puts the responsibility for the maintenance and upkeep on us for, while we're using it.
I guess the question was, Stephanie, was, what did the attorney say about that language? Is it okay?
I forwarded you the email with Steve's comments, I mean, he was thinking we needed to have more specific language than just them being able to say we need to tear it down, that if there was an FFA requirement, I think that was one of his comments, does anybody have that email, or? I don't have it, I didn't print it out or anything. He just thought the term was way too, very open-ended, and that we would be liable still for 50% of the cost, basically with an open-ended, they could say, let's tear it down and we're responsible, he just felt we, we were too exposed, basically.
But at the same time, that is an attorney speaking, wanting clarification on things, the aeronautical need, I think that it's kind of up to you how satisfied you are having that without further delineation, as, as mentioned from the attorney, do you, do you want a better clarification of what that language is, or you feel that it's acceptable with how it is here?
I read the whole thing, I didn't see anything that bothered me, of course, I'm not an attorney either.
I, I guess I wasn't really concerned about having it written in there with the, based off of aeronautical need, but.
Yeah, and they're fine with it if the council wants it, I think they just wanted to make sure that you guys understood that if they really, you know, it doesn't have to be a forced requirement on them, if, unless we put that in writing, and that we'd still be responsible for 50% of it.
I'm all for demolishing the building, we can't act on that yet, though, can we?
No.
Dark.
Thank you, Stephanie.
Speaking of demolition.
Yes, I brought it up.
I had a conversation with a, a former guardsman who was there when they made the move to the new facility, he said he was extremely surprised that they didn't offer to tear that down, and he thinks we should continue to pursue them.
Need to have the guard do it.
Pardon me?
Need to have the guard.
Have the guard turn it down, I mean, they are in that business. So, I think I'll start my letter writing campaign now, I was discouraged before.
Yeah, you, you went after, after that a couple of years ago?
I didn't pursue it a couple of years ago, but I still have all the letters that the chief sent, I was a little discouraged after I read them, but now that I've got new information, I think I'll.
You'll try again.
Okay.
Well, how crucial is that building to what our needs are?
That, who knows what we have stored in there, we have some sewer pipe in there, and I think we have HESCO barriers in there, and I don't know how much space that takes up, but we'd have to find another location for, for that, we don't want either of those items stored outside.
Correct.
But if it does, if it were torn down, we just have to figure out where, where else to put it.
The building certainly is not beautiful.
And if you feel it's.
Room there, I mean, you can always start storing cakes from the sewer plant there, too.
No, let's not do that.
See, Don shaking his head.
I'm just trying to get people talking about it, get rid of it sooner than later, it looks terrible, god awful ugly building, needs major work on the outside.
Charlie, what's next here?
Listen to Charlie here a second.
Charlie Walsh happened to be chairman of the airport authority, if the land is being transferred to the authority, I had a problem with coming back to you all saying that we're gonna have to tear it down, I mean, it won't be yours after it's been transferred. Now, I know the authority, if the airport authority goes away, it all comes back to you anyway, so it doesn't really make a whole lot of difference, but with building, you know, I've never seen a lease, or whatever you want to call it, have the leasing, have the permission to not tear it down. You know where I'm coming from? You look, Dace.
Hundred percent, Charlie.
The land will be the authority's, and the building on the land goes with the building. If the airport has to tear it down for FAA reasons, we own the land now, why would we ask the state permission to tear it down?
Because you want us to pay for 50% of it.
Well, that's true, but, you know, if we can get the guard to pay for it, they'll save you. Yeah, so that's why I'm saying that, you know, I have no problem with it going the way it is, if the FAA says it's gotta go, we have to say it's gotta go.
Well, that's pretty much what the.
And that's what it says now, right. But I have one more little problem, the trees, what a disgrace, I've heard that more in the last two months, you know, and I know in the lease it says you can have logs there, but sure looks awful. And the forestry department used to hide them behind Dankworth Park, Baldine, and now they're open to the, first thing people come in, fly in, what are you doing? I think it's, like I said, a disgrace.
Yeah, I think, I think what's the ash tree problems are with, and correct me if I'm wrong, they're not gonna use that anymore, are they?
We have mulch there, but, yeah, most, we might have a tree here and there, just as people remove it, but, yeah, a lot of this is due to the ash, we've had a lot of contracts this past summer, and we did storm out at the manor site, that we had to remove them from the manor site, they've been there the last five plus years, so we had to remove those when that was sold, but we had to imagine once the ash is done, hopefully this ball, or should be complete with most of that, that it won't be what it is now.
I'll be right behind you on that one, Charlie.
Thank you.
So.
Something not clear?
Hearing that, then, are you okay with us saying that we won't pay for half of the demolition then?
If the guard tears it down?
No, I mean, if the guard doesn't tear, I mean, if you have to go to bids to tear it down.
No, I think that's part of your responsibility.
Okay. Any other questions?
Not for me.
Okay, thanks. Anything else, Mary, that you want to add?
How that's set up is all a matter of pure negotiation on, when it comes to demo cost, is between the airport commission and you all as a council, and who's comfortable with what. Technically, they could say we want the, we'd like to see the land come to the airport commission, but we'd like to see it come clean, I mean, they, they could ask that, too, so, I mean, there's, it's a matter of what's the right compromise between the two entities, and that's, that's purely between your two groups as, as boards, as to what yours feel is acceptable as a compromise language on shared cost.
We'll say 50, 50%.
Yep, that's how it's set up here, and, but that's certainly, if you're not comfortable with that, and say that that's absolutely not right, you could push back and try to make it an adjustment to it, but that's, again, that's a policy thing.
Okay. Next item, resolution amending the encroachment policy from the City of Burlington, and I think this is what?
This is.
Result of the cafe.
Yeah, dealing with sidewalk cafes, on page four, item four is a new section that lists sidewalk cafes, before, they kind of fell in between a temporary encroachment and a permanent encroachment, and there's some confusion on where they'd fall and what the requirements were, so did some research and brought it before the planning commission as well, and came up with a sidewalk cafe section to their encroachment policy that lays out specifically outdoor seating for restaurants or adjacent uses, what their requirements are, so on page four, and then on page eight and nine, it lists what the requirements are for sidewalk cafes, this was set up as a, kind of evaluate at the end of the year type thing, and we'll come back next spring if there's changes that need to be made, or other changes to the encroachment policy as well, so intended to hopefully be a benefit, get more people outside and more active downtown for using the, the public spaces, and evaluate at the end of the year and see if anything else needs to be changed. But this allows sidewalk cafes to go to, for approval to the city manager, similar to temporary encroachments and vertical encroachments, so there's not the 30 to 60 day wait that a permanent encroachment has oftentimes, and then layout specific requirements for those.
Okay. Any comments from current downtown businesses?
I haven't heard anything, and Steve Reivers here, it's one thing, hopefully it'll be an easier process for people to go through.
Right, there's really only one business downtown that this affects right now, and that would be Uptown Ivy, and Martha was at the planning commission meeting and, and came up with a few suggestions of her own, and the.
Commission, or you missed that one, I think, yeah.
And the commission accepted those, and, and I think everybody was happy with it.
Good.
Steve, are you, are you familiar with, just because I happen to be up in Washington this weekend, they, there's a cafe there that has a.
D'Oni, uh-huh.
Would that fit within the standard, the way they've done that?
It's been a while since I've been there.
Because that's separate from the building, but it's out into that little island that, with the way the sidewalk juts out.
It's setting the bump out.
And it would be similar to what the, the former Penny's building is.
Oh, in terms of the bump out, right, yeah, because we have that on a number of, in a number of places, and I, I don't have the proposed ordinance in front of me.
This one says it should be adjacent to the building.
So it wouldn't allow it quite the way they've done it?
Yeah, that's something we could look at a little bit more.
I, because I know there's been a couple of questions, like, could it be out closer to the curb so that, so the people walk alongside the building?
Yeah, that's, that's how they have it set up there.
Yeah.
It wouldn't be allowed if there's alcohol sales there, but.
Right.
That'd be something we could look at, right now it says adjacent to the building.
I think there's a couple of downtown Iowa City there, that way you can walk between the building and the outdoor seating facility.
And, yeah, I think it's, it's kind of site-specific, I think in Washington, that's where there's, there's a lot of unused space on that corner, so it made sense, you know, I, I think that'd be preferable to say, you know, to pay, and I think I even talked to Charlie about that, everyone is said adjacent to the buildings, that mean right up against it, because we do have a couple of cases like that, by the art center is one of them, they're, they're not serving really much food outside, but there's actually more seating area, potential seating area there than there is on the sidewalk.
That's something we could look at on a case-by-case basis, and.
And so this is something we could evaluate again.
Yeah, yeah.
Like you say, in January.
Yeah, if we get applications, we could certainly look at those, if they're requesting something different than what our policy says.
I think treating it like a pilot project is a good idea, and, and, you know, we have the potential, we have a few people looking to open restaurants and eating establishments downtown, so we hope this encourages more of it.
Thank you, Steve.
I like these sidewalks.
Yeah, I do, too.
Very nice.
I do, too.
In the summer.
I, I don't like to eat outdoors, but I like the idea. I think it attracts people, in other words.
Yeah.
All right, moving, moving to consent agenda, nuisance abatements, I think there's four pages of those. Some of the same people keep coming back. All right, here comes our financial person to talk about the interloan agreement from the general fund of the tax increment fund.
Yeah, this, we approved the fiscal year 16 transfer just last month, so now we're gonna get on the cycle of each fiscal year approving them in July, and this is just to cover administrative and attorney costs associated with our TIF, TIF activity through the year.
And there's no real magic to the $20,000 figure, we, we did want to put it at a figure that was not, that was high, that was high enough to cover a portion of costs, but not out of line with what we actually spend, I think last year's when we had the 25,000, if you were to put, look at the time and effort that we put into TIF-related projects, that does not in any way cover the time and effort that went into them, because we did put a lot of time into it, and our, I think our attorney costs alone were.
25,000, I think.
Yeah, so when we put in a number here, it's, it's not designed to be an inflated one, we're trying to get something that at least covers a portion of our costs for running it, looking at doing TIF projects.
So this will be an annual thing, we're just getting it started for this next fiscal year.
It's one of those things, I trust that you guys know what you're doing.
Well, and again, doing, having a, and having an active TIF, it doesn't come without, there's a cost to it, to, to do it, and this is reflective of, if you're gonna do something and have a cost, it should try to at least cover a portion of its costs, so.
Okay. Okay, guys. All right, the next two go together, agreement between the City of Burlington and Klinger and Mike Nelson and Four Seasons, and also the maintenance and operation of public infrastructure, seventh edition of Westbrook Estate, all, that all goes together.
Yeah, and the second of those, Ryan had, had presented to the council last December, I think, somewhere in there, for recommending approval, and at that time, he was talking about having that be contingent upon getting some testing results back on the street, because he didn't have those results back, and council member Scott, you asked that we just wait until we get those results back, well, we got results back, and there were some of the air, air entrainment, is that the right word, the amount of air that was in it didn't meet recommended specs, and SUDAS has a standard in it, if, if you've adopted SUDAS, which we have, for a recommended penalty for having that, and we've never charged a penalty in the past on a residential subdivision where those streets have come back to us, even though we have it written within our, our policies to do it, and as we talked with the developers about what that, that penalty figure in there, they're, they had some concerns about being the first ones to have been charged on this, I think, and having the standard held, and it's not something that has commonly been done across the state, as I've talked with other communities, very few have something like this, some of them will have a performance and maintenance bond that they have, that they make as a requirement for any subdivision, which may be something that we want to look, that we look at in the future, Nick, so to try to address the same type of thing from a different perspective.
Good idea.
We did work with the developers and came up with a, with these, the, the first agreement is taking that $19,000 penalty and putting it into a, essentially putting it into a side fund, they're saying that, you know, if, if something does come up and you do see the problem has occurred in the first, well, bout. well, about five years, that, that was put into place September, I think, and so if you have this effective agreement now in July for four years, you're gonna get about five years after it was put in place. If you do see those problems come up, and it delineates what the problems are, and our engineering department looked through this and felt pretty comfortable with it, the develop, the developers feel comfortable with the criteria that are outlined in here, they'll essentially give us a nineteen thousand dollars towards our repair, which is what the SUDAS standard is designed to do, is to cover our costs. They feel that they weren't, I mean, they aren't that, they weren't that far out of, out of spec, and that, and, and really, that nineteen thousand, if there's a major problem, it isn't gonna cover the whole cost. But this, the penalty is there to say that there's the potential that you may have a problem, and to try to get to it. If there isn't a problem in the four years, we turn the money back over to them, and they, they feel that, that given the, everything else, and it being so minimally out of, out of spec, that they, they don't think that there will be a problem, but they are, they have been willing to put the money up, and if there is a problem developed, that they would pay that to us. So, we're accomplishing what is written in our specs. They do under, have an understanding during this discussion. This is kinda the, the manner that we're moving forward with, looking at the SUDAS in here with future developments, but again, I think that there's another thing that we do wanna look at with that performance and maintenance bond, and look at it from a different perspective on how to try to get at it, and that, that's, I think for, on a larger term basis, that's a better route, at least from what I've seen, for what other communities have done around the state, though we may, may need to have some more discussion about it. Is that fair?
Nick, do you have anything else you wanna add?
Ryan, I have Ryan, and. Burlington City Council, Nick McGregor. I talked to Ryan, the city engineer, about the condition of the road. He's recommended acceptance of the property. Didn't have any cause for concern right away, so, everything seemed to be visually okay.
Okay.
I drove in the street, it looks good to me, Jim.
I saw it there today.
You know, I've, I've learned a lot of things since I've been on council. How do we test low air entrainment? What, how do you do that?
I wish I could tell you, I'm not an engineer.
Brian could tell?
He will.
Yeah, I do. I, I, like I said, I've learned so many things that.
Brian Bros, Clinger and Associates, I live at seventeen oh three Group Street. Air entrainment is a measure of the air that's put into the solution of the concrete mixture. And it's actually tested by putting it in a, what we call an air pot, it's about a unit weight measure of about a quarter of a cubic foot, about a half a cubic foot of material. And we actually press air into it, and we measure, and it's cal, it's a calibrated thing that gets done right there during the placement of the, of the concrete.
When you pour it.
Yeah.
So, yeah, as your cement truck comes up, and as it starts to dump in, you'll take a, a sample out of it?
Right, we take a sample, and we, we actually take a sample for air entrainment, we actually take a sample for slump, which is kind of a rudimentary measure of viscosity, and then we collect fresh samples for compression strength later, so we don't have to core a hole in the street to find out actually how strong it is.
Yeah, okay, so, then if, at the time they did it, you knew that this wasn't.
Well, I think that, I think there was a, probably a misunderstanding with contractor, with the material tester on site, and, and what the city would accept. The range in the SUDAS is six to ten percent, and we actually had five point seven.
I see.
And so, so I think one of the larger benefits out of the process that we've gone through to talk with the city and communicate is better communication upfront on what the acceptance standards are, pre-construction, meaning making sure the contract, contractors know exactly what they're expected to do. And there are a number of different tests that go on during placement of a, of a, of a infrastructure like a street. Some are qualitative, some are quantitative. This happens to be a quantitative, and our concern was, we're hanging nineteen thousand dollars on a few fractions of a percent of something that is, is really, that seems really rough. So, I think the larger solution is, we have, we have a situation, I think we've already been able to implement with the same developer for other streets, that going forward, we have a better communication, how the city practices, and what they'll accept and what they won't.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, I learned something.
You're getting so smart, Jim, it's dangerous. This could screw up your golf game, though. You're gonna think about air and concrete issue.
Oh, boy. How are you, okay here, Mr. Scott? That's awesome. Mr. Fleming?
Yes, I'm fine.
Okay, and these next three are related, is, I'm correct, the resolution approving energy efficient plan agreement between City of Burlington and Interstate Power. And this is for the charging stations. A couple at the College, and one at Hy-Vee. Two at Hy-Vee, I guess.
Two at Hy-Vee and two at SEC. Alliant would be writing a check to us for twenty-five thousand dollars. Those charging stations, I think, are eight to nine thousand dollars each. So, for the, the one on, the two at Hy-Vee, Hy-Vee would cover the difference between the grant amount, five thousand dollars per, and the eight to nine thousand at a charging station cost. And SEC would be responsible for their per hour of shares. Ours, for our charging station, which would be located at the parking lot down here at Third and Washington, or, is that right, Second? I hate remembering streets. We would be responsible for that, and that would come out of the Renewable Energy Commission. We put, they have a set aside where we, we put aside five thousand a year, is that correct? And they've built up a few thousand dollars, about, are they sitting around twelve thousand or so now? And they'd use that set, set of funding to do it. Each entity has taken on responsibility for covering the electricity costs. I think that we're looking at, I was hoping that somebody from Renewable Energy would be here, but apparently not. They are looking at the, and I, I don't know if, I know they've talked with Braden, but I don't, since I don't have, I'm not Braden, and I'm not them, I don't know exactly what was said. I don't know, Nick, if you have some wording on how they've talked about for marking that, putting signage up on those.
I discussed with Braden about putting up signage, and they hadn't spoken yet.
Okay.
To, to what he needs to post.
Because I think what they're.
So, he's, he understands that signage isn't gonna be provided, but as to what is gonna be said.
I think they're, they're, they want some signage up, because I think what they wanna be able to do is have that be a free spot, which we're willing to do, but have some time limitation for how long they can be there. I think a full chart, or, they're looking at a four-hour charge, so I think that's kind of the timeframe, but again, I'm not on Renewable Energy Commission, I don't know exactly how their conversations have gone. They're looking at trying to have some wording on signage that they can get turnover on, on vehicles that do use it. But as you look at through the language here, it does talk about, Alliant wants to see, get some, some level of idea of how much these are being used, so that's a lot of what the verbiage is in there. We have the, the maintenance that goes with it, that we'll have to cut, that Renewable Energy will be responsible for, for taking care of. But they, there, this is a, a spot, they want, they do wanna use this as a data collection point, so they'll, Alliant will be seeing how much these do get used over time.
But we also have to provide enforcement in case somebody parks in that spot that doesn't.
Yes.
Yeah. Doesn't really belong there.
Yep.
Anything else? Go out and get your electric car.
That's right, I gotta get one.
Yeah. Or your motorcycle. All right, resolution approving lease?
We could do it in Indianapolis. I don't have the charging station, but also have the car.
There you go.
You can go in and pay a bobble of them out.
Really?
And then pump the car, take the car, go somewhere else. They got bicycles that can do the same thing.
Wow.
How much does that cost?
I don't know, I can do it. I, I've heard it's pretty inexpensive. They've got all kinds of, many smart electric cars.
I'll stick with this for now.
And lastly, on the consent agenda, resolution approving lease of two Toro Greenmaster thirty-one fifty green mowers, Greens mowers for Flin Hills Golf Course. Four-year lease.
We currently have, our current lease expired July one. That was, actually, I see, need to update the date here. That was done in twenty twelve. This is another four-year lease. We had sixteen thousand five hundred budgeted in our line item for the annual payment. The price that we're, we got from Toro was, or MTI, was fifteen thousand five ninety-two, so about a thousand dollars under what we had estimated based on the previous lease terms and amount. These are very critical items for the golf course. So, we recommend continuing to lease those two Toro mowers.
And they get used a lot.
Mm-hmm.
Questions, council? If you're gonna run a golf course, you gotta have one.
Yep.
At least if you're gonna have a quality golf course. Appointments, Animal Hearing Board. Tim Goodwin has expressed an interest in serving. The two, Owen Sloan and Elizabeth Van Fleck, want to be reappointed to Economic Adviser, Economic Development Advisory Committee. And Joan Bauer would like to be reappointed to Riverfront Advisor. Are you okay with that, Danny? Questions? All right. Comments, council? Hearing none? None? Anything else?
Well, so, the weekend was really busy.
Yeah.
I don't know quite how many people showed up for each event that I went to. I know the Symphonic Blast was really busy. There was a lot of people there.
It was very nice.
Oh, yeah, and it was, it was lovely. Before that was the Wood Flock, and I was there early, so I don't know how many people ended up showing up, because I had to leave for.
That was at the Bee's Park, right?
Yep. It was really neat, the bands they had. So, it's a good weekend, good busy weekend, lots of stuff outside.
Yeah. It was a beautiful week, weekend, too, wasn't it? Mr. Scott, what do you think?
Nothing in this town.
I was out walking yesterday, actually, and I walked on a couple of the new seal-coated streets. Those are really nice, a whole lot better than the old dusty that we used to have.
In my discussion with engineering, it's been a way better process than it has been in years past with the crushed pea gravel.
Yeah.
That limestone created so much dust, we, to my knowledge, haven't had a complaint about the dust.
As long as it holds up as well, it should be okay. Mr. Manager, do you think?
After being gone two weeks, I've just been trying to get through stuff, and I've got a cold, and I haven't really, hadn't really wanted to think today. So, good time to have a council meeting.
Yes.
Uh, no, I don't have anything.
Chief?
Thanks for asking, but just very briefly, I just wanted to thank the community as a whole. I mean, the last couple of days, the outpouring of support's been unbelievable.
Ah, that's good.
You know, for the local police departments, the cards, the letters, the flowers, the gifts, the, the food especially, that's always welcome. I can attest to that, but, no, in all seriousness, for the local community and the local police department, I just can't say thank you enough, so, we appreciate it.
Good. Good. Okay. We're adjourned. Thanks. Thanks, everybody.